Let's go. Everybody ready? Welcome to the March 18th, 2025 Board of Pennington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers on the bookshelves. Ms. Kara, if you have any speaker request forms today, please pass them to Ms. Kara, and she will bring them up to our dais today. She is the lady behind the computers here, so appreciate if you do that. And then you can speak on anything you'd like to speak on today. Next, we will have roll call into termination of quorum. If you would, Ms. Kara. Dur.
Here.
Drews.
Present.
Ross Connect.
Here.
Wyfembach.
Here.
Hatcock, here. Thank you, Ms. Kara. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Dur.
Okay, this morning's silent reflection is going to be that for the family of a South Dakota National Guardsman that passed away in the last couple of weeks. He was in my son's unit with the 155, and his name is Trey. So today it's a silent reflection and prayers and strength for his family.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda, please.
So move.
Moved by Dur, second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is a consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners use the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. The consent agenda contains the following items, which is A through L. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to remove any items, A through L, from the consent agenda? Not. At this time, are there any commissioners who wish to remove any items from consent agenda for further discussion, A through L? If not, can we have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, adopt a highway presentation. This is with Ginny Merrill and Highway Superintendent Joe Miller. Please come up to the podium, please. Thank you. Introduce yourselves, if you would. You bet. My name is Ginny Merrill. I'm the coordinator of the Adopt a Highway program here in Pennington County for the Highway Department, and we're here to recognize our volunteers and the hard work that they do in keeping our roads clean. In 2024, we had 51 organizations participate in the program. They cleaned 131.67 miles on the county roads. All 51 groups were invited to be here today, and we have 20 groups that have signed up to be here this morning to get their certificates. And the other certificates will be mailed to them in the mail. We also presently have six sections of road up for adoption. The roads available are on the website, and if a group or organization is interested, they can sure contact me. Just this last week, I had a business by New Underwood that is interested in adopting one, so we'll get them squared away, and that's in the process. So that's kind of exciting. So we surely appreciate everything these kids do and adults, groups. And let's begin. Thank you. So. What's your name, sir?
Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, we're going to go this way. Okay. So the first one up is the 28th Munitions Squadron from Ellsworth Air Force Base, Branson You bet. The 28th MXS of Ellsworth Air Force Base. Are they here? The 28th Logistics Readiness Squadron. Beta Gamma Zai. Black Waters, Black Hills Clean Water Alliance. What? Okay. The Children's Home Society, Black Hills Children's Home. Hello. Thanks for coming. Great. Exchange Club of the Black Hills. The Hargans Family. And these groups come from all over the whole county. We've got people up Deerfield Way. We've got people New Underwood Way. We're just tickled to death. This group, Jesse Brown Nelson Photography. He goes down onto Bombing Rage Road. Ardeo Equipment. South Dakota Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Two. South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, American Indian Science and Engineering Society. South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, student members of the American Chemical Society. Silver City Volunteer Fire Department.
Phil.
There's Phil. Okay, this next group, we all know who this one is because they're kind of famous. Spring Creek Kids. There you go. They left the boys at home, the girls came.
Brought the workers.
That's right.
We got to make a good picture and show off your T-shirts, girls.
Thank you, guys.
Western Dakota Insurers. Thank you. And Western Sky Vacation Homes. That's Downhill City Way also. Did I get, did I miss anyone? Yep. So we sure appreciate everything you all do for us in keeping the roadways clean, and we want to get a group picture with commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Jenny. We'll have everybody come up here for the group picture.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, I just want to thank every group that's here. And being in the Boy Scouts, we did that a lot. We just sit there and pick a road, pick a creek, and it's just amazing if you didn't do what you do, how that would be so adverse to the, it's just, we just need volunteers. And I, I just can't imagine that we, one project we did was just behind Bacon Park, Rapid Creek, from one bridge to another, and we filled trailers. We found deer heads, we found tires. So once again, thank you for all you do because somebody's got to do it, and it's normally the volunteers.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you. Come on up for your picture.
Right up there.
Leave your coat. Leave your coat.
I think we're going all the way up.
You guys better get in front.
What?
Call me before you head that direction.
Yeah, right in here. We're going to make us three bucks.
Just scooch these out of the way.
We need to.
You guys have the scuderia in here. Girls, we're in the front because we're short. Come on.
Can I get behind one of them?
Yes.
Girls.
Yes.
There we go.
Yes.
Hey, everybody looking right here?
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Next, we're on number eight, State of, South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit, Ms. Cindy Molt. Is Bruce going to be here, Ms. Cindy, or?
Bruce chickened out today because he thought it was going to snow so bad, and it might be up at his house.
If you do me a favor, kind of tell what the Financial Compliance Audit is and why they do it, if you would, please.
It's our annual audit. They do it every year. They'll be here anywhere from six to eight weeks, going over everything, checking for compliance completely across every entity that we, or every aspect that we cover. If you guys have any questions and want to visit with them, they'll be up in my office, so you can certainly stop by and visit with them. But they always like to do their entrance letter just to let you know that they are here and available for questions, and I would ask that we get a signature on the letter.
Do we have a motion or discussion on the legislative audit today? Any questions for Ms. Cindy? Not? We'll authorize this chair's signature on the engagement letter from the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit for 2024. Do we have a 2024 audit? Do we have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Number nine, items from Sheriff. Prison Transport Bus Purchase Update, please.
Good morning, Commissioner Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And we're getting close to the end of our prisoner transport bus road here that started back in 2023 when the commission authorized $743,860 for the bus. Over the course, the last two years of the build, we did do some upgrades at $10,760 for an upgrade to the camera system, some new equipment to reduce some blind spots on the bus, which is really important to that, to us. So I'm here today requesting a motion to authorize the amendment of the purchase price for the prisoner transportation bus to $754,620. We're going to have, we currently have about $770,000 in that fund, and I just wanted to make the commission aware that we do have the possibility of running into some tariff issues on this. MCI, which is the only, the only company that builds this type of bus anywhere, is stationed out of Canada. So we, there is the possibility that there will be some tariffs assessed. They are going through the process right now. We should have the final answer here in a few days. I do think, depending on what you read, if we can take possession before April 2nd or April 15th, depending on which literature you read out there, I think we can avoid the tariffs. So we are working on a plan right now to try to drive up, meet them partway, and take delivery this Saturday to hopefully avoid the tariff, which could be up to an additional $188,000. So it's important that we can get in front of that, and I'm hopeful that we can get through that. But I just wanted to let you know, if something happens to where they are going to assess us a tariff, I'll bring that back in front of the commission to have a discussion.
So Sheriff Mueller, you also have a camera system upgrade costing. Did you already talk about that, $10,760?
I did.
Okay. And then that brought your balance from 770 to 754, 620, if I'm correct.
Correct. And then we still have the prisoner transportation bus that we will be back in front of the commission if we get, once we get the other one delivered to declare surplus and go through the process for disposal. We had been in negotiations with Montana State last year. They are interested in buying the bus, so we have the possibility of doing a government-to-government transfer without going through a process, and we were looking at a purchase price from them of $100,000. The prisoner transport bus value is not as high as what you'd hope it'd be. There's just not a big demand for that across the country, and they're working through the final steps in Montana through the legislature to try to acquire the money. If they're not able to do that, we'll be back in front of the commission to work through a sealed bid process.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Little discussion.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Go ahead.
I was just going to say on the bus, why don't we contact Kristi Noem? She might be able to use it.
Right.
Thank you, Dur. Is that your discussion? Commissioner Drews?
So Sheriff, I presume we run this for five years, do we not, each of these buses?
We, we're actually bumping it out to close to seven years now.
Oh, really?
They make the buses to be able to handle more mileage than they used to be, and with the value in the last five years going from 550 to, you know, over $750,000, we felt that we could stretch that another year. So we're going to try to do a rotation between each year, six and seven, based on mileage.
So mileage runs probably up to 700,000, 800,000?
Yeah, they can run, I mean, they can run up to over a million miles on these if you keep them maintained properly. We like to get rid of them a little bit sooner than that. If you're on vacation and your bus breaks down, that's one thing, but if you have 40 inmates, sometimes inmates going to prison for life on there and it breaks down, that's a, that's a different scenario when we have bus problems in the middle of this state in the wintertime when you're full of inmates, and that does happen to us from time to time. So it's important we have a reliable unit going across the state.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So we need a motion to authorize amendment of the purchase price for the prisoner transport bus to 754,620. We have a motion, please.
So move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff Mueller. Items from Highway, Highway Superintendent Joe Miller, 2025 Bridge Improvement Grant Agreements.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Up in front of you here is Bridge Improvement Grant Agreements for bridges that we were awarded big grants for this year. So we've been applying for big grants since 2021, so this year was our fifth year in being able to apply for those grants. With these two awards, our grant totaling is a little over $5.4 million over the last five years, and approximately $700,000 in construction engineering costs. So that is what the passage of the wheel tax gained us, is access to that $5.4 million. So without the wheel tax, we would not have had that $5.4 million, and I don't, I should have the number of bridges that we've gotten off of our load rating and out of the poor condition, but I'm pretty sure we've cut it in about half since, in just under, just over five years. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any discussion? Any discussion, Board? Not? We need a motion to approve the Bridge Improvement Grant Agreements for project numbers BRO 8052-0025-1, PCN 0A6W, Structure 52-310-306, MBRO 8052-0025-2, PCN 0A6X, Structure 52-312-311.
So move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Dur. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'm hearing their Wyfembach on the Zoom, Commissioner Wyfembach's on the Zoom. Do we have to take these separately on the motions?
Going back a year, I believe we do.
We did last year.
I believe we do have to.
Fifths motions on each one of them?
Yeah.
2025 Annual Bid Award Recommendations?
So typically, I guess I'll explain kind of how I typically do it, kind of go through the projects and then touch on some of the higher use supplies, where they were at last year, where they're at this year. If that's what the Board would like me to do, I can, I'm certainly prepared to do that again.
That'd be good, Joe, just to give the public also an update on some of your projects.
So the asphalt concrete overlay, we received three bids. This is a universal drive, and three years ago, we had all of our roads driven with a van to give us a PCI rating, and this is one of the lower rated ones in our group. So that's why it was chose and as part of our five-year plan. So that bid came in to Simon Contractors. The low bid was $332,112.44. Our asphalt surface crack sealing, the low bid was actually about, I think it was $419,000, but that bidder did not have the proper bid bond amount, as explained in the memo there. So we reached out to legal, and they're suggesting rejecting that bid because they didn't have the correct bid bond amount. So it cost us about $4,000, I believe, is the amount. So the next lowest bidder is Highway Improvements, who we've worked with in the past, in the amount of $423,569.50. The next one is our chip seals, asphalt surface treatment. Two bids were received from, on that, Batumina's paving and Simon Contractors. We're suggesting, or we would recommend awarding Alternative A to Batumina's paving This is about $200,000 less than what we estimated last year. Last year's bid for the same mileage was $1.4 million. So I believe what we're seeing there is the bid prices are coming down with the, with the oil prices, and our bids are starting to hopefully level off from, from the COVID era. So the next one is our bridge replacement, which we also received favorable bids on. We're recommending awarding to the Young Guns Construction LLC in the amount of $286,038. So that's the construction cost for the contractor to put in the box culvert. We actually get a, on part of our annual supplies bid, we get a concrete product, which we were, we actually purchased the box culvert for this project off of the last year's bid. They awarded, or they honored last year's pricing. The price of the box culvert is $313,855.98. So with the purchase of that box culvert, this bid came in about $300,000 under what our engineer's estimate of $965,340 was. So we see a very favorable bid there. I think the only one that was over what we estimated was our crack sealing, and it wasn't by much. So that is our, our construction projects. Our supplies, asphalt concrete composite, last year was $111 a ton. This year, it's $110 a ton. Two years ago, it was at 108, so over the last two years, it's gone down three, it's only gone up $2. Three-quarter inch base course, last year was $9.50 a ton. This year is anywhere between $10 and $13.50 a ton, depending on if we get it from Pete Lean's, which is going west up into the hills, or if we get it from 63 Industries or Western Construction out by the airport. Our asphalt maintenance materials, two years ago, it was 68.50 a ton. Last year was 69.30 a ton. This year is 67.35 a ton. So it's gone down $1.95 compared to last year, and it's actually even under two years ago pricing. So that's good to see. And then our cutback in emulsified asphalt's are AE 150, which is the oil that we use for our in-house chip seal, stayed the same, so at $735 a ton. And then the other big one that we use is our de-icing sand. Last year, it was $24 a ton, and this year, it's $28 a ton. So that went up $4 a ton. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any discussion? Does someone want to do a motion all these, or do you want me to read them and then you guys just agree?
You bet.
Or disagree? Okay. Just checking. Okay. Number one, move toward AC 2025 Asphalt Concrete Overlay to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, in amount of $332,112,44.
So move.
Moved by Dur.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move toward ASC 2025 Asphalt Surface Crack Sealing to Highway Department, Highway Improvement Incorporated, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, in amount of $423,569,50. Motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move toward AST 2025 Asphalt Surface Treatment Alternative A to Batumina's Paving Incorporated, Hortonville, Minnesota, in amount of $1,294,6147.
So move.
Moved by Dur.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move toward BR 2025-1 Bridge Replacement 52-511-280 to Young Gun Construction LLC, Ludlow, South Dakota, in amount of $286,38.
So move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move toward AS 2025-01 Aggregate Material Items, number two, four, and five, to 63 Industries LLC, Box Elder, South Dakota, Pete Lean and Sons Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, and Western Construction Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, for Airport Pitt and, I don't know what that is, Canachi?
Canachi.
Canachi.
Canachi Pitt, based on location. Motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Move toward AS 2025-01 Aggregate Materials, number one, three, to Pete Lean and Sons Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion?
Move to approve.
Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Move toward AS 2025-02 Asphalt Concrete Composite to J&amp;J Asphalt Company, Rapid City, South Dakota, based on simulated project costs.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Move toward AS 2025-03 Asphalt Maintenance Materials, item number four, to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Move toward AS 2025-03 Asphalt Maintenance Materials Items, number one, two, and three, to Western Construction Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Move toward AS 2025-04 Precast Concrete Pipe and Bridge Products to Rinker Materials, Rapid City, South Dakota.
So move.
Moved by Dur.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Move toward AS 2025-05 Cutback and Emulsified Asphalt to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota.
Move to approve.
Moved by Drews, second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move toward AS 2025-06 De-icing Sand to Western Construction Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota.
So move.
Moved by Dur. Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move toward AS 2025-07 Dust Ice Control Solution to Rosane Construction LLC, Custer, South Dakota.
Move to approve.
By Ross Connect. Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move toward AS 2025-09 Timber Bridge Materials to Wheeler, Whitewood, South Dakota. Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I just want to confirm, uh, the. uh, the four down, what was the amount that that would be for BR two zero two five dash one, bridge replacement?
I have two eighty-six and thirty-eight cents.
Zero, zero, thirty-eight cents.
Two hundred and eighty-six thousand and thirty-eight cents.
Okay, just wanted to, yep.
I might have said it thirty, made it sound like thirty-eight dollars at the end, so instead of thirty-eight cents. So it's two eight six, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, thirty-eight cents. Okay. Do we have any public comments on any of these? Matt?
You missed a page, there's another one.
I like, no, I did. Superintendent? Any questions?
Thank you guys for your time, and I think you got all your motions in one item there today.
That was a lot of motions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Items from Buildings and Grounds, Director Davis Purcell. This is already a no, so sit down.
Dang it.
Just getting there, Mr.
Excuse me, yeah, Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. I'm looking at, I'm requesting to utilize some accumulated building fund money to do some cold shop storage improvements over at Weed and Pest Natural Resources. The reason I'm requesting accumulated building is typically, at least when I came in, we, we try to establish our capital improvement fund that we utilize every year to maintain buildings, to upgrade buildings, to do certain things. We pretty much allocate seventy-five percent of those funds in January and hold some of them for emergencies and other things like that. Again, I think this would be a great improvement needed for natural resources, so I'm up here, and what they're requesting or what we're requesting is a concrete floor installation. It's, and I should have mentioned on here, the shop is about thirty feet by seventy feet. And right now it's just gravel, it's basically just a metal building with gravel on the inside. It obviously should have probably been concrete to begin with, but I'm sure there were some cost-saving measures. But just the concrete, we're looking at thirty thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Then we will put insulation and a thermal barrier over that insulation, which is about thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then I'm currently working with MDU right now to get a proposal to get gas to that building. We do have a gas connection at the Weed and Pest Office Building, so I don't think it'll be too bad as as long as we keep our BTUs pretty reasonable for those heaters. So I'm looking at a not to exceed amount of seventy-five thousand to be able to purchase those heaters as well as get the MDU connection. So and then I'll let Scott talk about why he wants these improvements.
And what do you do, sir? Just a sec.
Scott Guffey, Natural Resources Director. We do most of the maintenance on our vehicles, general maintenance, oil changes and stuff like that. And then minor repairs that we can do in-house, we try to do. Sometimes we have to tear apart an ATV or something like that, and it'll sit there for a week or so until we get the parts in to do that repair. Our shop isn't real big, so it kind of takes up valuable space when we have a machine tore apart. So by doing this, this will allow us to tear apart those machines out there and free up our shop area for filling up our, our tanks and stuff like that. It's, it's pretty tight, so this has been on our wish list for a while. I want to thank Commissioner Dur kind of helping us pull this forward so we can get this done.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Ross Connect, please.
Uh, thank you. So what's, what will that building have for electric service?
It's got electricity throughout it.
Okay, so that's right there?
It does, yep.
Okay.
Do you have any other discussion?
I will move to proof.
Commissioner Dur, did you have discussion first?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I had my, you know, a few weeks ago I had my first Weed and Pest Board meeting, which went very well. And I think you all know that Scott does a great job. He's good Weed and Pest Board members, and it was just a comment that I had at my first meeting saying, you know, what do you guys have, you know, kind of going on, kind of like the rest of the county talking about your projects and some of those things? So kind of what's your wish list? He brought this one up, and I felt it was a no-brainer that, you know, when the building was built, it should have had that stuff installed at the time it was built. And so the utilization, I did talk about, do you have the ability to go to the Highway Department to do some of the mechanic work? And it has typically been done within their office, and that's kind of typical of Weed and Pest Departments. They kind of take care of their own machinery, and in this case specifically, the small engine is done by their office. And so it saves us, if you can imagine, I've sent some of those out for repairs when you're going out for repairs on that equipment and we're doing it in-house, so I support the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Dur. There's one thing about natural resources, since I've started here, which was a while ago, he's always very frugal. He earns a lot of his own money to help out his organization. So again, I agree, it's a no-brainer when you have a department head that's utilizing a lot of those funds by working for it with the outside sources as well. So thank you for all you do, Mr. Guffey.
So I will make the motion to approve building grounds to utilize up to seventy-five thousand from the accumulated building funds for the installation of a concrete floor, insulated walls with thermal barrel, barrier and heating units at the Natural Resources Cold Storage Building.
We have a motion by Ross Connect, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Dur. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Item twelve is Emergency Management Director Dustin Willett, twenty twenty-four, Pennington County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, good morning, good morning, members of the commission, Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. So happy to bring this before you, and only emergency managers and planning geeks get excited about plans, but I'm actually excited to, to bring this forward this morning.
Are you calling yourself a geek?
I am, I am loud and proud. So this process is a, a five-year iteration, so these plans have to be updated every five years per, per federal regulation. But the, the content in the plans is, is super important. We started this in twenty twenty-two with a contract with Black Hills Council, as you Jennifer share. So the team over there did, did yeoman's work, fantastic work. I don't know if you remember or not, but this was our previous plan. Couple inches worth of printed-out paper. The new plan is, lives in, in a, a digital space. It is, it is a online plan powered by Esri Story Maps, so much more accessible, much more updatable, much more user-friendly and interactive. There's probably not a whole lot of people that have flipped through the three hundred pages of the previous plan, but the new plan allows people to interact with that in, in numerous improved ways. So super excited that this, that this is here. Where we're at, at this point, is that plan in that format, which is not only a first for South Dakota, but one of the very few plans in the nation that's gone to a, a digital format, made a successful review through the state of South Dakota and then a successful review through FEMA. So FEMA has approved this plan pending adoption. So at this point, our task is to go before all the elected bodies, every municipality in Pennington County, as well as the county itself are participants in this plan, so we'll be going to Quinnwall, Wasta, New Underwood, Box Elder, Keystone, Hill City, Rapid City. And we're starting here with, with the county commission, and we're looking for two things. One is the resolution of adoption of this plan for the next five years, and then we'll bring another one back to you. We've been participating in this since the, the Disaster Mitigation Act, basically back in two thousand is when all this started, and, and we've been approving plans since then. So we're looking for a, an approval resolution. The other thing we did is there is a, a second plan, again, federal-level plan called the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. This is a every ten-year plan, but the things and the people and the processes involved with the Community Wildfire Protection Plan are very, very, very similar to what we have to go through for the, the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. So we've combined those plans, the wildfire portion of our Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan actually comprises the Community Wildfire Protection Plan in totality. So two plans in one, but they are separate documents, and so they require separate signatures. So hence the, the, the two items on, on the agenda. Both of these plans, in addition to providing guidance, direction and information to, to planners across the communities and across the county, these are also required documents for a lot of grant application programs. So we've got a lot of organizations in the county that avail themselves of the BRIC grant, the Building Resilient Infrastructures in Communities, including some of our, our West River Electric, some of our utility partners utilize those grants through Pennington County, and some Land Management Agency grants, BIA, Forest Service, National Park Service, in regards to wildfire, require that Community Wildfire Protection Plan to be in place and adopted in order to apply for, for some of those wildfire mitigation grants. So in addition to being good information, these, these approved and adopted documents or plans also unlock some grant applications that, that folks use across the county. So.
Thank you, Dustin.
That's what I've got, happy to stand for any questions.
Well, first, let's do approve the adoption of twenty twenty-four Pennington County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution. Do we have a motion? So move by Drews. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Wife and Bach. Any discussion?
Yeah, discussion. So was this plan previously approved by the board? And then this is just the resolution because it's gone up the chain to be adopted?
I want to make sure I understand the question.
Well, the question, yeah, so I'm looking in the information I have, and I actually don't see the plan.
Right, so the plan doesn't exist in a printed form, it is completely online. So that link's been, that draft plan's been through public review, it's been made available, it can, it's been available online for, for many months as it's gone through the review process. So it is a, a link through our, through the county website, it, it actually has its own website as well. But the plan doesn't exist in a printed-out, hard copy form.
All right. And so what you're asking, just so I'm clear, not just on the resolution, but you're asking us to adopt the plan that's in the cloud?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I haven't seen the link to go look at the plan.
I will absolutely get that to you.
Good, so the reason I can't vote for it is because I haven't seen the plan.
So do we need to, can we continue this, or do we have to have a certain time limit on it?
Uh, so we, we run into, yes, we can, we can continue this and, and, and give everybody time to review the plan. I apologize, I thought that, like I said, this has been an ongoing thing, but, but I was probably remiss in not making sure our, our elected officials that have come onto the board this year probably remiss on my part of making sure that they, they weren't well-versed in, in what that document is.
So Dustin, is the, is the wildfire one, is that different? Is that online, digital, or is?
It's, yeah, it's in the same format, it's in, in that plan as well. So the trick with this is, is these plans have to be adopted and approved in order for, for those grant applications to go through. However, I think it's, we're into about mid-April before I get in front of every elected body, so I have until mid-April to, to collect everybody's signatures on these.
So if we have a substitute, Board, are we okay continuing it for a couple of weeks on the, the natural disaster plan and the wildfire protection plan?
Could we do it on April first? Is that our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
You okay with that, Dustin?
So, yeah, for me, I can't approve something I haven't seen. And so, and I'm familiar with these plans, I've worked with Jennifer before on these plans, and I've helped develop these plans, but I would like to see the plan, and if I had any comments, make comments, I probably won't at this point in time, but I can't, I can't support approving documents that I've not reviewed.
Okay, so Board, are we okay with it, continued discussion?
I'm more than willing to withdraw my motion at the second. I have looked at this, but it was probably back in November, so we may mention it at that time, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. Wife and Bach, are you okay continuing this?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it'd be a motion first to continue the twenty twenty-four Pennington County Natural Disaster, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution. Do we have a substitute?
Second.
Move by Dur, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the continuance, I'm sorry, the continuation is April first, Ms. Kara, on the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution, and then it continues April first for the twenty twenty-four Community Wildfire Protection Plan Resolution as well. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Move by Dur. Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, thank you, Dustin, for doing that for us.
I'll get that link out to everybody.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is items from Human Resources, approval of IT Director appointment. Do we have that IT man appointment here? Come on up, sir. You can introduce yourself today.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Bancroft, HR Director.
What's your name, sir?
Good morning, Mike Iverson, Assistant Director, Carnegie IT.
Thank you, Mike.
So I come before you today that I want to share, you had a interview with Mike that he did a very impressive job of presenting his credentials, as well as his long-term experience with Pennington County, that hands down, he is the qualified candidate. So my recommendation is that we would promote Mike to the IT Director role, and additionally, that where he would be placed on the wage scale, that the policy does allow that he's got some pretty big projects ahead of him within this first twelve months, and that depending on his performance, that the commission could make the decision to increase his compensation from what I'm recommending today, so wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. So the motion could read as follows, move to approve the appointment of Michael Iverson as the IT Director effective March thirtieth of twenty twenty-five at the rating of P fifty-one, step five at four thousand, two hundred and one and sixty cents bi-weekly.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. Do we have a motion first, then discussion? Motion by Drews. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Now, do we have discussion? I have discussion. Thank you, Mike, for applying. We appreciate you, I've seen you around Pennington County for a long time. I've always liked your personality and the way you work with others, and your experience even adds to that. So it's always nice to be able to see somebody before they move up to the next position and see how they work with others and just everything about you I've always liked. So thank you, Mike, for applying and, and moving forward, and we're going to miss, miss Laura, Laura. But it's nice to have a predecessor as well, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner, for the kind words.
So there's been a motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect.
Madam Chair.
Discussion?
Yeah, couple of comments. So, yeah, I appreciate the fact that, you know, the department had a succession plan and set it by, you know, your director, and it looks like you have prepared yourself for this, and obviously, you know, we're quite happy that somebody internally is able to fill this role. So we're looking forward to working with you. And I've got a question for Carol.
Good.
Could you explain the ten percent policy in step?
Yes, that according to policy three dot one eight, that anyone who is promoted, that they can be up to a ten percent increase for a promotion from what their current salary is. And so at this rate of the four thousand, two hundred and one sixty, that is, on the wage scale, that's right below the ten percent. If we went to the next step, it would take it over. So that's why, rather than starting at step one for the IT Director wage scale, he's starting at step five is the recommendation.
All right.
Discussion?
Yeah, so does that mean any employee moving from point A to point B, that increase can only be ten percent? Or is it specific to a certain classification on our pay grade?
No, if it is over ten percent going to step one in that promotion position, they can go to step one. But if it, if you're wanting to take them higher on the scale, it cannot exceed that ten percent.
All right. And when did that policy go into place?
It's either in twenty twenty-three that we revised it, but it's been in place for a number of years. And then we most recently revised it with the new wage scale, and it stayed at the ten percent.
All right.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion again by Drews, second by Ross Connect? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion queered, carried. Cracking myself up, okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity.
Any words, Michael?
All right, thank you.
None? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carol. Approval Administration Building Hours of Operations Study. Let's have a Study. Let's have a presentation by Ms. Carol, our HR Director.
Yes, I come before you today to talk about the Administration Buildings Hours of Operation, that it was in 2023 that in July, we moved to the four 10s, so Monday through Thursday for 10-hour days. And actually, it's 11 hours of operation. And so at that time, we talked about that we would reevaluate that. So I come before you today to talk about how we could go about doing that. And so what I'm going to propose, that this plan outlines a study that regarding these hours of operation for the Administration Building, and that the goal is to assess the current operational schedule, explore some potential changes, and provide a clear communication plan for both of our stakeholders, being the citizens and the employees, regarding any updates or decisions. I want to share with you as far as what is the purpose of this study. And overall, the reason that I feel strongly that this is the right way to approach this is that it will give good insight and data for the Commissioners to make the decision as far as being able to talk with citizens as well as employees as to why the decision is being made, whether it's to assess the current hours and days of operation to remain the same, or whether there are some potential changes that we could make. And again, it does ensure that clear communication with employees and citizens. So the overview of this study is to evaluate the effectiveness and accessibility and the efficiency, and then gather feedback from our employees and citizens, and then analyze that information, making sure that we are meeting the service needs. So there are six different components to the study. So I'll start with the first one to explain what what that entails, is that we would review the existing hours and days of operation. And then we would seek citizen input on the accessibility and the convenience. We'd also obtain employee feedback on workflow and productivity. And we'd also study as far as the foot traffic and service request data. So that will help us understand the current schedule and how it's affecting our key stakeholders, being the employees and the citizens. And then the second step, or the second component of this is gathering that stakeholder input. So we would conduct focus groups that are listening sessions on work-life balance and service quality, for example. We'd also conduct public meetings for listening sessions to gather the citizens' feedback. And then we'd identify any unmet needs outside of the normal hours. And normal hours, I think, are being described as being Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. And is there anything that would not be met if we do not conduct hours outside of that? And then the the third component is the comparative analysis, that once we have those listening sessions, and these are listening sessions where we're not passing judgment, we're not making recommendations, we're not discarding any of the input that we're hearing, that we truly are listening, that we want to make sure that we also are comparing with other county buildings and public agencies as far as what their hours of operation are. And then identify any trends that may support any possible adjustments to what we currently have. And then from there, we would have a workout with a target group of citizens, as well as employees and department heads and Commissioners. And we would explore different scenarios based on those findings from those listening sessions. You know, is it extending days with reduced hours? Is it keep the current schedule? Are there some other options out there that would come out of these listening sessions on on what we could do to make sure that we're providing the best customer service for our citizens? We also, of course, need to make sure that we are looking at the component of cost and resource implications. Excuse me. So we need to understand our current status and any feasibility of proposed changes. So doing that analysis and and looking at what's the effect, you know, if we are going to need to add FTE to change the hours of operation or expand those from what we currently have, what is that cost to the budget? And is that feasible for us to do? We also need to look at the effect on the workflows. And then, of course, from on HR standpoint, the recruitment and retention factor, that what pressure does that put on any of these? And then also, with the current schedule, what are some of the current cost savings that we are experiencing, if any? And then we move to the implementation plan. So we want to make sure that we have as smooth a transition as needed if there are going to be changes. So we would have this timeline to allocate these resources to the change, and then adjust any employee schedules if that is necessary as well. And of course, another big component of this is to look at the the timeline. And so I've mapped out here, and this, of course, is a timeline that is flexible as we would work through the study, that if we need to, we can compress it. If we need to, we can expand it. But this is a good example, that we'd be doing phase one during the months of March and May, and that's where we're doing the planning and data collection. Phase two is the analysis and the engagement. That would be conducted during May and July. And the reason that you're seeing some of this being an extended time is because we're also working on some other major projects, such as the budget during this time. And then phase three would be where we develop the recommendation. That would be in the July, August timeframe. Phase four is to make sure that we have a solid communication and plan in place for that timeline of September to October. And then if there is a change implementation that we need to make, that it's timed out, and this is an expanded timeframe. And the reason being is that there is definitely a school of thought that this should take place when the admin building moves out to 900 concourse, that that would be a good timing for our citizens, change a location, any change in hours as well. And again, this is just an example of a timeline. It's not locked in stone. So another really critical piece to this study proposal is the communication plan. And again, we have two key stakeholders. We have the internal as well as the external. So making sure that we have regular updates and explanations of any decisions that are made. And so staying in close contact so with our internal individuals, that it would be through an initial memo explaining what the study will entail, and then progress updates. And that, again, could be through various means. It could be through team meetings. It could be through emails out to the team, et cetera. It could be here within the Commission meetings. And then when the final decision is made, that we would definitely meet with employees if there are going to be any significant changes, and have the FAQs for them, that the frequently asked questions, we would have responses for them on that. And then for our external, that we would use our our media resources, like the website, social media, and local news updates with press releases. We would also be doing public town halls for feedback about the changes and making sure if we need to tweak anything at that point in time. And then the final announcement also through those similar channels. So that brings me to the final piece here, that this study will provide valuable insight into the needs of both the employees and the citizens as our key stakeholders. And it will allow the county to make informed decisions about the future operational hours of the Administration Building. The communication plan will ensure transparency, accountability, and keep both internal and external stakeholders informed throughout the process. So the next steps that I'm seeking today is Board approval. And then to the next step after that would be to form the study team. And the third would begin phase one within two weeks. So I stand for any questions.
Any discussion, Board?
Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So Carol, I appreciate the comprehensiveness of this information and study that's going to take place. Obviously, when we made the change, I mean, it was a different era. It was going through COVID. We were trying to retain employees. We were trying to hire employees and having a difficult time at both. And so I think we came up with a with a response to try to do that, and I think it worked fairly effectively. I I understand why we're doing this. But I don't think we can continue to make make major changes. And so I would, I would caution that we do need all the information. We especially need the information on what the various costs could be, additional costs or savings that we may incur by making adjustments in the in the hours of operation that we do have, whether or not we're going to be able to fill the positions that we desperately need filled. And I think specifically, when I talk about desperate, I talk about the Treasurer's Office as being one of those. It's very critical as far as the public is concerned. So I appreciate the work that you've gone through in putting this together. And I think it's a very comprehensive plan that's that will give us the information that we need. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ross, Commissioner Ross Connect.
So Carol, on the external, can you go a little bit more detail? Social media, would that be like a Facebook? And the local news, would that be the pretty, Rapid City Journal, for an example? And if you do the Rapid City Journal, is it just going to be once? Is it going to be during that initial cycle? Is it going to be more than once? A public town hall, where would that be at? When would it be? How do people find out that that's where it's going to be? And then when we get all this information, who's going to sit there and decipher and make the decision? Or how's that all work?
So as far as the communications to the external key stakeholders, that that would be through various means, and it would be regular updates, just like what I outlined as far as our internal. But as far as any of the town halls, that more than likely, we would try to do that, like here in the chambers, we would go to the communities as far as like Hill City, Keystone, Wall, New Underwood, et cetera, and work with them to have locations there where we could actually meet with the citizens. I think it also would be prudent that, you know, the Treasurer's Office is a good location, that talking to people when they're here conducting their business and hearing from them as far as, you know, what are they thinking about the hours of operation, to get that insight because they're actually here. If we have an election during that timeframe, anybody that is here for absentee voting, that we would talk to them as well. So face to face, I'm not a fan in this study that we would not do any online surveys because they can be corrupted so easily, as well as they're anonymous. And so I think that accountability through the face to face and the listening sessions, that I would really encourage that the Commissioners would participate in those as well, with that guidance, that we can't comment on what we're hearing. We just need to take that information because they truly are listening sessions. And then the last part of your question, that once we have all of that information, we would look for the common themes in any of it. And that's what we would bring forward into that workout session with the work group. And again, I would strongly encourage that Commissioners participate in that, you know, one or all type of thing. And that's where you start going through and you start analyzing, okay, if if this, what we heard, if we were to implement this, what is going to be the cost to that, both as far as, you know, recruitment, retention, budget, all of those factors, doing that risk assessment. And then not necessarily making a recommendation, but bringing that forward to the Commission so that then you have all of that information to make your decision.
I guess my question would be, would there be a form where there's a name, and so that it's really legitimate, instead of somebody calling up and saying, this is so and so, I really want this? So when you look at the results, it'll, you can sit there and say, well, there's a name, there's a date, this is what they want.
You know, that's really difficult to say that they have to put that information. We can request it. And in most cases, people will give you their their contact information.
And I, and I also think that, you know, we're talking, we got a four day, we might go to a five day. Nobody says that we can't go to a five day. And people, and some departments would be able to sit there and still do what they're doing. But if they're, they want to do a 10-hour shift, that's fine if they have the number of employees to do that. But, you know, you can still be open five days and navigate that by just working with your employees and hours of operation that would still allow your department to do what they're supposed to do.
And I don't want to speak for the Commission, but what I believe that I have heard from the Commission is that what this is about is the administration hours of operation. It is not mandating anything to the departments as far as what their schedules would be, that they have that latitude to be able to figure out as far as how they're going to meet those hours of operation with the scheduling.
Ross Connect.
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Annette, would you come up?
Annette Brant, Pennington County Treasurer.
Raise your right hand, just your.
[laughing].
So this, I want you here for part of the discussion, but I'm going to direct it toward Carol, and I'm sure you're probably going to have some input. So the, you know, and I heard a little bit about this, you know, when I was on the campaign trail. And obviously, the last few months, the Commission's been contacted, you know, via our all-county email individually. I've received a few phone calls. And obviously, the ones that we're receiving are, you know, stating that they would like us to be open for business because we're serving the public. And so I like the plan that you put together. I think it's so well thought out. And, you know, I would look, we have just talked about this, but if we are going to go to a five-day week, then it looks like we would be moving into, you know, the concourse building later this fall, which you mentioned. And if we're going to change operational hours, et cetera, I would like that to be made at the move when we go to concourse, not at the beginning of the year. The, obviously, there's two offices that have the biggest impact on the public in the Administration Building, in this building, when we're working, you know, these extended hours on a four-day week. And the number one office would be the Treasurer's Office. And number two, it's only related to when we have an election, and that would be the Auditor's Office, to be open on that Friday for the first day of, you know, absentee voting. So when we're looking at this, and you brought up a point about if we go back to a five-day work week, there has been no discussion about, you know, how you would staff as department heads, elected officials, how you would staff within your office based on your current scheduling under a four-day work week. And so let's just say theoretically, you know, on a four-day work week, the employees are working four 10s. And I know there is a mix in there to a certain degree. But as we're, and I've, you know, and on some of the contacts we've gotten, and some of the social media, I've read, you know, where, you know, you need to hire more staff, and this relates to the Treasurer's Office. And so, you know, you need, if you, if you want the wait lines to go down, it comes down to not only being open four or five days a week, it comes down to what level of service do we want to provide to the public? And what level of service does the public want to pay for? And so there's a couple of things in the study that I would like to see. And I've mentioned a couple of them to Annette, and I've given her some information. And so relates to the Treasurer's Office. And so the question I would have, and I would like this information presented as part of your cost analysis. So if we move to a five-day work week, do the department heads, based on current staffing levels, still have the staffing to provide the level of service they believe they need to provide? And can they still do that if those employees are choosing to work four 10s versus a five, eight-hour day? And so what are the number of FTEs required to maintain the current operational schedule we have, just saying, based on how the employees are scheduled? And can we maintain that level of scheduling with the employees and still provide that service stretched out to one additional day? And what would the FTE count be or the requirements be to, you know, go to a five-day work week on four 10s if those offices so choose to staff that way? The office that's going to have the most difficulty in the building doing that, I believe, would be the Treasurer's Office. The, and it comes up, you know, and I know the Treasurer's Office has been catching some heat about the hours of operation and about, you know, wait lines and that type of thing. heat about the hours of operation and about, you know, wait lines and that type of thing. So the other thing that I would like to see related to the treasurer's office, and these are reports that can be run internally because I did come up here a few years ago when Janet was treasurer and I did a staffing analysis for the Mead County Treasurer's Office, detailed number of transactions, financials, all of those things. So I know the data is there and I know that Carol, you've got the skill set and the staff in your office that could help you with this along with Annette. But what I would like to see going back, and I think the data exists, so go back to when the, when the, when this building was open five days a week. Go back on a Monday through Friday schedule, five days a week and do a, you know, and I'm not sure how far you want to go back. I would make some suggestions that it would cover the COVID period and then kind of after that, but go back and look at the number of transactions, uh, by month in the treasurer's office per day and look at the number of transactions per employee that data is available. And look at how many transactions, you know, at the front counter are being done for licensing, entitling, et cetera. That's not going to capture all the story because in the backend, you're processing tons of mail titles, you have a call center, all the other things that go on in the treasurer's office. I think that workflow of the treasurer's office and analysis of that workflow compared to a five day work week, Monday through Friday, a four day work week and what that workload is on the employees and if there's a difference between that based on a four day work week, extended hours and a five day work week. And I think you've already presented some of this information. I've seen, you know, where you're talking about the number of people that are doing transactions in those early hours that we're open, you know, before 8:00 AM and after 5:00 PM for those hours and the number of transactions. But the majority of the comment that, you know, we are receiving and the feedback that you're getting as department heads and Annette, you've been on these emails and phone calls, it's really had an uptick in the last couple of months.
Yes.
About the public's concern about our hours of operation. But I also like to see data and I think that Carol, that you're into data as well. And so I think if we look at, you know, the number of transactions our employees are doing per hour, how that has changed under those change in operations. And I would take it a step further and say, if we had the ability to increase our level of service in the treasurer's office, and it's not that the employees are underperforming, it's about the number of employees you have and how many transactions they're doing per day and just the space available that we have to do those transactions. You have so much counter space, so many windows. And so a couple of days ago, uh, Monday, I believe, I was in the building and it would have been, you know, about 10 o'clock in the morning or so. And I think there were about 52 people waiting in the queue in the treasurer's office. And, uh, then, you know, Annette and I had a conversation about, you know, now it's property tax time and would you be able, would you put the, the property tax box, it's not April 1st yet, but would you put that out into the lobbies so that we can divert some of that, you know, potential traffic that would be waiting in line just to pay their taxes? And so, uh, I gave it to Annette, but I'm going to give you a presentation. I'm not sure if I have yet, but I went into data analysis of a treasurer's office workflow and send that to you to kind of give you an example as to what we're looking for. But I think that information would be helpful to the office, to the employees, to the board and to the public if we could look at the workload that is being done within that office and if changing hours has an impact. And I believe there is an expectation about level of service and then it comes down to what can the county afford with that level of service? And what is reasonable? Is it a, you know, um, is it a five minute wait time? Is it a 10 minute wait time? Is it 20 minutes? And what is our average wait time per transaction based on that type of transaction? And I believe based on your queuing and the other data that you have, that information is extractable.
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. And then my comment would be, I'm asking this and, uh, but, uh, I would like the board's input as to this is anything that you would like to see because it would be another project that, uh, the department would be taking on, but I believe it's extremely beneficial to the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Dur. Commissioner Weifenbach, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
I appreciate what Jerry had to say and we often walk that fine line between, you know, uh, the treasurer's office, his elected official's office and how do we better work with them to help, you know? Right now it is where I get a majority of my phone calls from or emails from that are looking for opportunities. I think Jerry covered everything that I would like to see. Uh, I guess it's, and what role, I guess, would Annette want us to play in, in, in conquering this? I guess that would be my question.
Ms. Annette.
Thank you. Um, that gives me plenty of direction of what Commissioner Dur had, um, just spoke of. I can pull all of that data. I've got it ready. Invited the commissioners up, um, on an individual basis to see that. And one thing I'd like to make sure that the public's aware of too is that although we are open to the public, just the four days a week, the 10 hour days, the, um, the treasurer's office is open, or excuse me, is working five days a week already, um, with our, uh, staff. And so we're closed to the public because on Friday, we are doing all of the mail that comes in. So at some point, these, um, our customers are also utilizing mail service. If we were to stop production of face to face during the week, um, that would delay our, um, turnaround time for those that are coming into the office. This way, Friday, we have half of our staff is there eight to five and that is all we're doing without the phones and without, um, people. So I just want to make sure, because I have had that comment before of, um, a department head should be able to figure out how to rotate their hours and keep all this coverage. Um, we are doing that already with the flow of, uh, mail coming in. That's how we're, um, getting quicker turnaround times than we ever had before. The other thing is with these four, um, tens, we've been able to fine tune our 24/7 access to the consumers. Everything that we do up in our office is available for them to do online as well. Um, they can also, uh, through the state, they can renew their, uh, excuse me, through the state, they can renew their registrations. The self-service terminals open 24/7. Um, we now have a, um, toned in on our property tax payment, um, portion on our website. And then we have frequently asked questions on our website and people can also email 24/7 on there. We will get back with them within 24 hours with the, uh, response. So we were able to do that. I think that the other departments would be able to do that as well. So, um, just want to set that straight that, um, I feel that the treasurer's office is open 24/7 and a remote access for those that can't make it in, um, Monday through Thursday. And the other thing that the public is probably not aware of is that motor vehicle transactions in the treasurer's office, we lose our support with the state. We're, they're East River, um, and so they're an hour ahead of us. So we lose our, um, support at four o'clock. And so if there's anything that is an issue, um, that we have to contact them, they're, they're gone. They're, we, we have to wait for the next day on that as well. Uh, the other thing is that when we do close the doors at six o'clock, we're not done at six o'clock. We don't just lock the door and go home. We still need to compile and, and balance and get all of our documents in a row so that we can start right away again in the next day at seven o'clock. So thanks for hearing me out for that. It's kind of hard to explain all of that when somebody's, um, you know, just upset about the four ten, four tens and think that that's all that the, um, county is doing. But I do believe that there are some of the other departments that are using, utilizing that as well. And I would just encourage the departments that haven't, uh, updated their website to give the cut, consumers a little bit more insight that they're missing on that Friday if they have to, like, I think Commissioner, um, Roskinick had mentioned at one time that on Fridays, as an assessor, kind of likes to have access to registered deeds or, um, and so maybe if there's some way that we can update our individual website so that the community has that as well, depending, I mean, we'll see what, what comes out of this. Um, I appreciate the fact that we're going to utilize face to face individuals that are coming in because it's really easy to sit in your armchair and, and, you know, throw something out there of, well, they should be doing this or they should be doing that. And really, um, the majority of our customers only think that we do motor vehicle transactions and there is so much more. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Weifenbach, Commissioner Weifenbach.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, but I think Jerry's, uh, approach is going to be, as long as we're all heading that same direction and rowing the same boat in that direction. I would, only thing I would add on to there is the fact of having analysis of our, uh, the machines that are used because I think there was a memo that came out that East Rivers licensing machines are highly more used than our machines are. And, uh, so there would be a specific reason for that. One of them is probably location, the other one's probably location and the third one's probably location, but I don't want to speculate on that, but I do think that that should be added into the, uh, the kind of data that we draw. And I think, uh, like Jerry had mentioned, a process analysis would make the most sense because in the bottom, the bottom line is, is that, uh, you know, through my years of service, when I get one of these calls, there's typically a hundred or more that, the people that won't take the time to either call me or email me. And typically it's people that know me and the people that are, uh, you know, afraid of government don't make a lot of comments because they feel the fear of reprisals. So I think it's something that we better take very, very, uh, look at and, and take a very, very broad perspective on this. And if, and that's willing to take our input from what we can come up with and help her with any process or anything she may need to give her the tools that she needs to be successful also. So, but I think Jerry has a pretty good handle on it. I would just add in the, the machines. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Annette.
I get an update on those self-service terminals monthly and that again has increased our, um, uptick of usage where people are taking the time to learn those self-service, um, terminals. And so through our four 10 hour days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, um, the, there is an uptick in usage of those, which is, um, advantageous to us as well. Not necessarily moving them someplace. People come here and then they, they, they know that it's there. If you move it around, you're going to lose it. I'm, I'm trying to get the usage up so that we can have an additional one, not be moving them around. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick.
You know, when we were deciding three years ago, two years ago, the biggest opposition that I had came from the title companies, we have three now, and then the realtors themselves. Uh, they were really concerned that not being open on Friday, there was, uh, certain transactions that couldn't really get complete. Uh, with that being said, I would ask that Audra come up with the registered deeds because I believe in her office, uh, in the real estate, there's only two folks. Audra, do you want to speak on that at all?
Sure.
Remember, we're doing a study on this guys, but we'll go ahead and have some discussion.
No, and I think it's good.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just think it's good that we're having the discussion and so, you know, as they go to launch, they have an understanding as to what the expectation is and, and you're doing such a good job of running the meeting. We got plenty of time.
To get the money today.
Currently I have two full-time real estate personnel and Kathy Rice, my chief deputy, or I also assist with real estate when need be.
So do you see with the growth that that is going to be more demanding relative just to the, your, uh, the real estate portion of your office?
Um, I would say with the growth of the county, we will eventually have need for probably another employee down the road, but right now we're, we're maintaining. And, um, with the way that the interest rates are, whether they change or not, um, we've seen a little bit of a decrease in real estate transactions currently.
So when you went to the four hour days, did, uh, you get any, what, what kind of feedback did you get from the title companies and, and the realtors in general? Because I, there's some prominent realtors in Rapid City that I got emails from, so.
I, um, believe, I've never really had, I've, I've had comments from realtors saying five days a week is a work week, you should be open, but it's not based on them not being able to do transactions. It's just because we changed it to something that they're not used to. Um, I did have one title company who was very much opposed. The other two said they would work with us and have worked with us. Um, I don't believe, I haven't heard from any of them that it stopped any of their transactions, um, but I could be wrong. So I believe they still are closing on Fridays and they are still able to have their transactions happen for their, their clients.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, the other thing that I thought of that, one of the obstacles that we had going from four day to five or five to four would be daycare because we've got a lot of employees here that have daycare and daycare is really a problem. And so when we, if we make a transition, that's, uh, some folks are going to have some major problems trying to, uh, navigate with their daycare providers.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
So, um, my input is it's about the employees, but it's also about the citizen. Uh, first six months, everything seemed pretty good. Um, next six months, not so good. So I didn't have just a couple of comments and it wasn't just the treasurer's office. It goes all the way around in everybody's office, especially when you have buildings and ground sheriff's office with different hours. Then you start having controversy between all that and why are they different? Why do they have to be different? If, why do they have to give, uh, this much service, whether it be the employee saying it or the, um, citizen? So it doesn't just go into a couple of offices for me. And, you know, I've been here long enough and I know enough employees and I know enough people that it goes both ways. So for me, um, I'm going to be nice and, um, say we're okay with that study. Um, but I also believe, um, just like our job, it's, uh, customer service and how we get the best customer service and still work a schedule for the employees that work for them as well. And daycare goes back and forth. That goes with citizens as well as, um, employees. So remember, um, what you have in your life that's complicating yours, the other side has the issue. All I asked and a couple of employees have came up to me and we've had good discussions and I appreciate those discussions. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's about the citizen as well. And, and I understand that you have, you want to do another job, you want to do something else, you have your daycare. Just remember the other side is the same way. So anything we can do to make a solution or resolution that works for both sides in a way that we can still give that customer service, uh, like we've doing. Um, and I, like I said, I don't believe it's one department that is the issue or two. I think, uh, there's a lot. And then when you're treating other departments different than you are, um, the others, um, that causes some conflict as well and maybe some different things for Carol to look at as well. So, um, you might have a few on the other side that don't get to work the four tens that might be a little upset that other employees get to and they don't. So, um, let's look at all aspects of that when you do a study team. Hopefully the study team, um, and that our employees will be honest enough not to feel bad about saying their side or, um, being treated differently in that way. So for me, um, I'm okay with this at this point. More time is better to get citizen input, more time to get more employee input. Um, at first I'm like, okay, let's get going, but, um, we already know that's not how we can work. It's not going to be fair to the employees, it's not going to be fair to the citizens. The main thing the employees were saying is it's, um, they were thinking we're just going to switch right away into what we want. Um, when we put something on the agenda, it's for discussion. It's not going to happen tomorrow. Um, that's how we do things as a commission, I believe. It's just suggestions moving forward and then figuring out how we get it done. So, um, just so the employees, I know a lot of you are listening, um, because you tell me, um, bottom line is when you put something on there, it's for discussion to try to get to the right solution. So, um, be patient, understand our side. It's not just, um, one-sided. Um, we have to do a job and we were elected by citizens to make sure that, uh, we are elected to do the right thing on your part as well as ours. So, um, thank you for listening to me. Anything else?
Madam Chair. Commission, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Annette.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that as well. And, and as an elected official and even prior to that, you know how long I've been up in the treasurer's office over 20 years and we, um, the, the feedback we get from the customers is that they really enjoy those hours, that they're, that that has worked for them very well. So I appreciate, um, that the community is going to have an input in that, in that as well because that office is ran for customer service. That's the biggest thing that we do. Originally when these hours changed, um, it was being looked at for an employee benefit, but it very quickly became, um, a, a better customer service for our, um, individuals that were trying to get in early and, and, um, get in after they got off of work as well. And they were very. very appreciative of it. So, thank you. I just wanted to add that.
So, Ms. Annette, here's the issue with it, though. So, when people are seeing all the lines, um, they're thinking, "Not customer service, unfortunately." They're thinking it's not going fast enough. It's not, it doesn't matter what hours, hours, if you're eight to five, or if you're seven days a week. Once you see lines, um, that's what happens. It's not you personally. It's what's, what's being seen at your department. So, um, they're gonna say it no matter what. Uh, seven to five, or eight to five, uh, seven to six. I truly believe, when they see a line, you're just thinking the people aren't working hard enough. They're not doing enough to make sure that the customer service is right. So, just food for thought. Um, anything that we can do to keep those lines down, anything that we can move forward with kiosks or anything to make it so the county and you, um, whether we like it or not, it looks like we're doing customer service. Not that you aren't. Annette, I already know. I've been up in your office. I've seen what your people do. It's what the people are saying. So, it's not just your office. Um, again, what they're seeing is the rest of the departments being open, five days a week. And when they see a line, they're gonna say, "What about us?" They're gonna think, when they see that fifth day, that you can work a little bit harder. So, um, those complaints are always gonna be there. I'll just tell you up straight.
Understood. They like us Monday through Sunday. I'm very much aware.
But I don't want you, I don't want you to work weekends.
The workload's there for sure, and we have the stats to show it. So, I'm not, not concerned with that. I'm glad it's a, I'm glad we're talking about it. Thanks.
Ma'am, I'm not complaining about you, what you do, because I'm just saying what I hear and what I see. And I'll just be anywhere. I don't care for Sam's Club. Get some more employees out there. Um, it's too big a line. It, it has nothing to do with you personally or, or just that. Just when you see a line anywhere, you're thinking, "Get some more people." So, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Yeah, Dur.
Dur.
I'll just finish up with a couple of comments. And one, Carol, I just sent you the presentation that I sent to Net that goes into data analysis, number of FTEs, calls, transactions per hours, calls per day, et cetera. So, I think that would help you in this study. And I'm just gonna make a comment that when I came up here a few years ago to do a staffing analysis of Pennington County compared to another county, the employees here were doing double the transactions of the county I did a study for.
Yes, sir.
So, and I do recall back in the day, when in the courthouse, the treasurer's office had lines wrapping down our stairwell, you know, for licensing, all the way down into the entrance of the courthouse. And it gets back to the point about, another thing to remember, the system that we're operating on is a state system. It's not our system. The guidelines we're operating under are state guidelines, not our guidelines. The state of South Dakota, you know, does not do a good job on their end. Uh, they're, what, four months behind on getting titles issued once you send them off to peer. And the other comment that I would make, getting back about service, and if you see a line, uh, you know, and again, I think it would be great if this building was open on Saturdays until noon. And so, what is that cost? And what is the service? And so, we can say that we want to do all of these things and staff to that level of a five, 10-minute wait time, but what is the cost that goes with that? And, um, so anyway, I just want to say thanks for everybody that is working on this, everybody that, no one is ignoring, you know, the opportunity to provide better service to the public. And I just want to thank the employees in the treasurer's office, because that is the most forward-facing office, uh, that we have with sitting there hour after hour, going next, next, next. So, thanks to you and all of your employees.
Thank you. I'll pass that on as well. Great team up there.
That wasn't a comment against you when I was talking about your employees. That was just about lines. Um, and if we, go ahead.
So, so you shop at Sam's Club, so if the public's listening, the ones that do enjoy these hours, be sure you catch Deb and let her know you like it too. Okay, thanks.
Guess what? I use the queuing system or the, the new system. I'll be up straight. I didn't, I'm like, "I'm not going there. I'm not going there." I'm one that, uh, you're not moving forward into digital, 'cause I'll mess it up. Well, I did it at the bank, which worked good. And I did it at the, uh, Sam's Club. And I don't wait in line anymore, by the way. So, um, anything we can do digitally or otherwise to move us forward, that's, I'm not saying you're doing a bad job. I'll keep saying that. It's to, what can we do better? And, uh, it's just natural that people, like I said, I don't care whose line it is. Um, you can always have more employees and more stuff. So, um, not saying to do that. Hopefully, the study comes out right. Let's have a motion on the study, by the way.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Or, one more thing, Carol. If we move to approve this study, what's your, what's the next step? Tomorrow, we start the process?
So, the next step is within two weeks, 'cause I'll have to rearrange some priorities going on within the HR in order to make this come through.
So, you'll have it done in two weeks?
No.
Commissioner Dur.
Begin phase one in two weeks.
Okay, team, let's move forward. HR working with the Board of Commissioners to conduct an administration hour of operational study. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
Moved by Drews?
Second.
Second by Dur. Any discussion? We're done. Just kidding. I'm teasing. Are we all done with discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, ladies, for coming up. All right. Items from the public. Speaker request form is required. And if you want today, it's not required. You can come up and speak because, there's no one in the room. A time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this section on any brought forth that are properly noted. Speakers under the section will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. Sir, do you have a speaker request? That's okay, sir. Just come up and state your name, sir.
Thank you. Uh, my name is John Sharp. Um, been, I've lived in Pennington County 50 years. And our neighborhood, uh, has, out in Rapid Valley, is just, at least for myself, been made aware and self, several of my neighbors, uh, of a proposed, uh, apartment complex that's gonna be built. And I just want, I don't know if this is something that, uh, I guess I don't understand the process of, of this, but I just want some awareness that, uh, myself and several neighbors have concerns and questions. So, I don't know the proper process.
Robert, John, you look like a friend of mine.
We are friends.
John, um, you could probably go to our planning department, or you can go to our planning department. Our planning director's right behind you, Brittany Molliter, sir. And then she could answer your questions, maybe not like right now, but she can direct you upstairs, so they can answer your questions if that works for you, sir.
Okay. All right. Great. And then, is that something, do you know, is it something that will be brought to the, this commission and that the public can have input?
She will be, um, explaining that to you and how you make public comment on it, sir. And then, anything you don't feel that you've got enough information, we're always here for you at any time, sir.
Okay, great. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dur.
I have a comment about the items from the public, uh, as to the placement on our agenda. I would rather see items from the public at the beginning of our agenda, and we make, and we make that adjustment. It seems like, you know, we go through a lot, and then we get down here. And I've seen, you know, in the last, just short time I've been on the board, people waiting, you know, just for one specific item like this. And it takes up a lot of their time. And typically, most agendas that I've seen, the items from the public are at the beginning of the agenda, so they can come in and do their business with us and go about their day.
Does anybody have a problem with putting that at the beginning of the agenda?
Is that Deb?
Commissioner Wyfembach?
I would agree with Jerry. I'm glad he brought that up, because I've had several people bringing that up to me also. We're, we're kind of not cognitant of their times. So, I, I would agree with Jerry, 100%.
Ross Connect and Drews, please.
Oh, totally. All for it. Yep. I don't have a problem.
Okay. We'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, uh, you guys need a five-minute recess?
Yes.
A 10-minute, 10-minute recess? Okay. Let's have a recess.
You need to drink some water.
Are you ready? Items from planning and zoning. Uh, first, we'll do, move to open as Board of Adjustment.
So, move.
Moved by Drews?
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Cody?
Uh, Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. Uh, so, Item A is subdivision regulation variance COSV 25-0001. It's to waive the requirement to construct additional water storage for domestic use and fire protection on the subject property. Uh, the applicant and landowner is James Larson. I do believe he's on Zoom if there's any questions, and his son Kyle is in the audience, do. Uh, current zoning is planned in development. Access is off Abigail Drive, and there's no special flat hazard area on the property. So, a little, a little history. Um, Mountain Meadows subdivision, when it was created, it was originally supposed to be a 50, I believe, a 56-lot subdivision, and the developer's gonna do it in phases. Um, so, he put notes on the plat to meet our subdivision requirements for water storage. And those notes said that at the 65th building permit, the surety's posted for the water storage, and at the 85th building permit, um, that that water storage be, um, constructed. Well, that developer never finished, and we ended up with, I believe, it's 13 or 14 lots in Mountain Meadows. Uh, so now, the owners of those lots are stuck with those notes on the plat. Um, so to develop, they're, they've been vacating these notes. And as part of the vacation, they have to, um, do a subdivision regulation, not to construct that water storage. Uh, the Board has seen seven of these requests in the past. They've approved all seven, um, as long as the applicants were still willing to construct the fire sprinklers in the house, uh, since they don't meet the fire, um, fire flows required. And the applicant is going to meet that requirement as well and put those fire sprinklers in the house. Uh, so with that, staff does still recommend denial of subdivision regulation variance COSV 25-001, as there's no special condition that exists on the property. Uh, but if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and decides to approve the request, staff would include one condition.
So, do we have a discussion or a motion, please?
Uh, Mr., just a couple of comments. Cody, how many of these have we done?
Uh, this would be the eighth one. And with excluding the common lots, there's three lots left after this.
And I think I've been up there three or four times. And so, with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve subdivision regulation variance COSV 25-0001 with one condition.
So, do we have a second? I'll second for discussion. So, my discussion on this is, we've done this many times before. Um, it does protect them from, uh, fire. We decided to do this on other people, so we didn't shut down, so they couldn't build their house. We also went through the Fire Service Board in order to move this forward, to make sure they were comfortable with what, um, we had approved, and they had no discussion on it. So... Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cody. Now, we move out of Board of Adjustment, please.
So, move.
Moved by Drews?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is your planning regular gentification plat, COVP, uh, COVP 25-0001, James Larson, to vacate notes on the plat of Lot 2, Block 2, Mountain Meadows subdivision.
Yep. So, Item B is the vacation plat, COVP 25-0001. It's the same property as what we just heard. Um, so, as I stated in the previous item, uh, these are the notes on the plat that are on the screen, uh, for anyone who hasn't seen them before. Um, so the ones in yellow are the ones that they are proposing to, to vacate. Um, really what it is, it's, it's the, uh, secondary means of, uh, septic, uh, not requiring an engineer to do septic, not requiring that water storage, not requiring that surety. Um, the only one out of this one that hasn't been vacated that's highlighted is number eight, um, and that's to do a, uh, ATU unit, uh, for the septic system. Uh, so, the board, or so, the plan, or, sorry, staff recommends approval of vacation of plat, COVP 25-0001, with two conditions, and that's at the concurrence of the planning commission and is consistent with the seven previous requests.
Thank you, Cody. Do we have a motion or a discussion, please?
Madam Chair, move to approve COVP 25-0001 with two conditions.
Motion by Ross Connect?
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is approval of annual MS4 stormwater report. Briefing on that just a little bit, and then we can make a motion for you, Cody.
Yeah. So, uh, this is the MS4 permit. So, the, Pennington County is part of the, um, MPDS permits. Uh, so every year, we're required by the state to submit a report to the state on how we meet those requirements. Uh, there's seven requirements. Basically, what that permit is, is we have urbanized areas in Pennington County. There's the valley, Colonial Pines, and then Universal Drive up by, uh, Pete Lean, uh, that we monitor for illicit discharges. Um, really what this report is, it's, it's put in front of the, uh, Board of Commissioners every year, 'cause it's gotta be signed by, uh, the county official. Uh, so really, uh, it's just updating the state on what we've done the past year, on how we meet our MS4 requirements. Uh, so if there's any questions.
Any questions or a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dur.
Move to approve the 2024 MS4 stormwater report.
Moved by Dur?
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that report. It took a while to get that done. Items from Chair, Commission members. Um, I have one update as, uh, Vice Chair today. Update on the Drainage Commission. Um, it's going, for dissolving, it's going to Rapid City and Box Elder for approval to dissolve in the next few weeks. So, just so you know, it is moving forward. Thank you to Alexa and the State's Attorney's Office for moving that. Um, we appreciate all their work. It didn't take a couple of days to get that done. So, thank you. Any other Commission members have anything that isn't on the, um, agenda?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
On, uh, March 10th, 2025, Carol with Human Resources, Commissioner Dur and myself discussed the four to five-day work week notifications for public scoping. Uh, we discussed that in Item 13B the day. On that evening, I attended the Central States Fair Board Meeting and election of officers for 2025. President will be Jim Hunt. Vice President will be Quentin Riggins, Secretary Hannah Wedham, Treasurer Marv Lurbe. There was discussion on hiring a sponsorship manager, director coordinator. The motion was made and passed to create a task force to look into the matter. Uh, we're looking at $100,000 cost to repair the HVAC system for the Gen Pro Building, which is a major revenue generator for the Central States Fair and the, uh, Stock Show as well. There is discussion on accounts receivable, uh, no concerns as of yet. On March 11th, 2025, I met with Pennington County Assessor Trevor Abernathy and Tom Palbraski with Live Hospitality. Relative to the county's new approach on assessing hotels and lodging properties, historically, the cost approach has been relied on in doing that. Moving forward, more reliance and emphasis will be placed on the income approach to value, which is basically the relationship of the properties, annual net operating income, and a market extracted rate of return. On the 12th, uh, of March, I did a Zoom meeting with the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners and officials. There was discussion around the number of bills that the association was not supportive of. However, uh, these bills passed anyhow. The main topic was the Governor's Tax Bill 216, which caps the annual assessment at 3% and has a five-year sunset clause. This would take effect in July of 2026, and it would, uh, have an impact on taxes payable in 2027. There's also a discussion on House Resolution 6002, which would, uh, dictate and create a summer study. On 3, 14/25, I attended the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners and officials. Officers for 2025 are as follows. Ron Ross Connect, President, Jeep, Pennington County. Jim Lentz of Custer County will be Vice President. Brenda McGruder of Lawrence County will be the Secretary. Kathy Glines of Harding County will be the Treasurer. And Charles Bellhurst of Harding County, uh, who is a Harding County Commissioner, was elected to fill Ted Seaman's vacant position on the Board as the Black Hills District Representative. Tim Goodwin was the main speaker, and Nicole Earbalk, District 32, Representative, also spoke at this meeting. On 3, 17/25, myself and George Larson toured the Meals on Wheels Kitchen, which is located at 330 Philadelphia Street, in the housing facility owned by Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, who provide, they, uh, provide the space occupied by the Meals on Wheels program. George serves as the Western South Dakota Executive Director for the Meals on Wheels, who in the Rapid City Kitchen prepare and deliver roughly 100, or... who in the Rapid City Kitchen prepare and deliver roughly one hundred, or one thousand meals daily. Meals are delivered by volunteers. Each meal is individually prepared to the needs of the client and their diet restrictions. I joined a volunteer driver, and we delivered eight meals in southwest Rapid City. I've been working with the Keystone Commission on housing for the elderly, who are concerned with the demise of an eight-unit elderly apartment complex that is encumbered by a fifty-year mortgage that was entered into on February the fifteenth, nineteen ninety-six, between the town of Keystone, between the Town of Keystone Commission on housing for their, and rural economic community development. The property has historically been managed by Sturgis Management Group, who no longer want to manage the property due to its small size of eight units. It is not financially feasible, according to the management group. As the Director of Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, we are trying to work on a solution that will work for the United States Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. The Pennington County Housing Redevelopment Commission has offered to assist the local Keystone Housing Board with the following compliance considerations at no charge, as a way to support affordable housing in another community in Pennington County. One would be to manage the property's waiting list through their established housing software. Two would be to create initial certifications and subsequent recertifications and submit these through the USDA's and MINC system. Three would be to approve the monthly project worksheet in the MINC system for proper payment to the owner. Four would be to annually upload and submit the project's budget through the MINC system. The crutch of the issue is finding another management company that is deemed acceptable to the USDA Rural Development. Uh, and, uh, one of their requirements is, uh, a management entity has to be deemed acceptable by the agent, provided that the agent or staff member has a minimum of two years' experience and satisfactory performance in directing and overseeing the management of a similar federally assisted multifamily housing. So, where this is all sitting right now is that they've reached out to, uh, USDA, they've given them a list of management firm. Uh, some of them don't call back, but nobody has any interest in this, and I believe at the end of March, they have to have some management firm in place. Right now, that they're suggesting this subsidiary of Keystone, that they would just try to do it themselves, but, uh, that's where the crutch of the issue lies, that, uh, USDA said, uh, no. So, tomorrow, we have a meeting, uh, and I think there's gonna be some discussion on what part we can play, and we've already offered at no charge to do the compliance part of it. Just gotta see if we can find a management group. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ron. We're on committee reports, so Gary Drews, let's do that, and then we'll have Jerry do the legislative reports after our committee report, sir.
Okay. So, on March tenth, I went to the Library Board Meeting. They, uh, accepted a concept of remodeling the main floor bathrooms and approved to allow Director Terry Davis to work with the city on financial feasibility of that. They also discussed a landscaping project that the foundation, uh, Library Foundation would possibly fund. March eleventh, I attended the Pennington County Extension Board. Uh, they re-elected the officers, Matt Oden as Chair, Patty Bruner as Vice Chair, and Heather Shumlee as Secretary. Uh, there's been a turnover of employees, but a new employee is scheduled to start this week. Uh, they also discussed creating more opportunities for four-hers to report on their club activities at different venues. Uh, the rest of it, Ron, has covered the Black Hills Association. Uh, expect Jerry will cover anything that, uh, at the, uh, Cracker Barrel that's necessary. And then, uh, the legislative webinar will be covered by Jerry also.
You're covering all, Jerry. Just kidding. Commissioner Weifenbach, do you have anything to share?
No.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Dur.
So, yeah, Commissioner Roskin covered the Fair Board Meeting. I did the Air Quality Board Meeting. Nothing related to report there, was a Zoom meeting. Uh, the Building Committee, uh, talking about Building Committee, it went through, it came to the agenda today about, uh, doing the upgrade at the Weed and Pest Building, so I appreciate that. Uh, Compensation Committee, uh, we're still having conversations about the, uh, overtime policy, and then how it ties into our current holiday policy. And so it, uh, the discussion we had was that when you touch one little policy, it has a replicating effect, uh, because I noticed the Sheriff's Office, in their operational manual, has policies related to pay benefits and employment, uh, that need to be tied into the discussion with the overlook of our county handbook. And so, uh, there was going to be some discussions on maybe changing, uh, you know, kind of the holiday pay type thing as to how it's utilized. Maybe for some of those employees, right now, it's a use it or lose it. And if they don't have the opportunity to use it during the year, that, uh, we talked about looking at the policy to do a payout of those hours at the end of the year. But all of this ties into what the initial discussion was, which is drawing further review of our policies throughout the county, and that is how we're paying out overtime. And some information I got from Cindy, our auditor, I just went through these numbers last night and put them together. Since two thousand eighteen, the county has paid out eleven million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars in overtime. So, in that seven-year period, nearly twelve million in overtime has been paid out throughout the county. Twenty twenty-four, the overtime paid out is two million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty. Twenty twenty-three, two million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five. And, uh, a talking point that I'm bringing up at the next Comp Committee, and I sent them an email this morning, ties into our overtime and how we're paying out overtime, calculating overtime. And, uh, for example, in that same timeframe that I just discussed, from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four, one employee in the county earned two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars in overtime. And so I think that's why, you know, we kind of have some of these policies in place, and as we look at budget and go through here, you need to look at the financial impact. So, for example, the big talking point last year was doing a three-point-one million-dollar pay increase to get the employees up to, uh, you know, market value, kind of midpoint in that analysis. But let's just say, in addition to that three-point-one million, there's another two-point-five million that's not talked about, and that's overtime. And so you can imagine the projection of overtime if you increase that base wage by three-point-one million dollars, and then it's just compounding the impact of this overtime. And so anyway, it's a conversation to have with Comp Committee Department heads as we move forward about why I believe it's necessary we make some of these changes. And my other concern related to that would not just be the dollar amount that we're paying out, but the number of hours that some of these employees have to work. And then that would indicate to me that if you're working that much overtime, you're not even utilizing your accrued benefits, other than maybe in a situation, and I don't know that yet, that it would be a payout situation that we're currently doing. So, uh, that's a talking point to move forward, to make sure that we kind of have a handle on, uh, the policies we have and how that relates to, uh, maybe some things we don't budget for. And, uh, so anyway, that's kind of still the talking point with the Comp Committee as we go forward, working on some of those employee policies related to pay and making sure that we have consistency of operations throughout the county. The, uh, um, kind of, uh, Building Committee, we talked about that. Comp Committee legislative stuff, obviously, the legislation is closed. The Governor's Bill on Property Tax went through with that three percent cap on growth for owner-occupied. Uh, the, uh, and I'll get the document, I have it, I'll share it with, uh, the rest of the Board, but at the Black Hills County Commission Association Meeting, uh, the Association put together a document as to impact of Senate Bill two sixteen on counties. I've got that, I'll copy it, make sure Joan gets it out to the rest of the Board. Uh, so anyway, I mean, as we go forward, looking at, uh, you know, getting into our budget cycle, et cetera, and, um, what some of this property tax reform and discussions are gonna be and how it's gonna impact the county. The first thing I would say about the legislature, kind of, uh, this year, taking on county government and school boards, et cetera, uh, maybe with some help from Municipal League, wherein, uh, you know, let's not give counties any part of the sales tax revenue. You know, it's been discussed for decades, so let's block this out. Uh, just a few years ago, there was a discussion about, uh, you know, what do we do? Because, uh, how do you, how do you handle it if a county goes bankrupt? And so that was a statewide discussion just a few years ago, and in this legislative session, some of the legislators are making a point that county government is, uh, overfunded and, uh, overbudgeted, and so we have to do something to limit that control and to trickle down to the school districts as well, which are getting about sixty-seven percent of that property tax dollar. So, the comment that I would have related to that, going back to the state, would be all the mandates that come down to county government from the state, and, uh, who would run a business and state that anybody can invoice me, and, uh, I'm gonna run a business and try to maintain a budget and finances and stay afloat, when the state of South Dakota on judicial, uh, you know, appoint court-appointed attorneys, all the cost we have with judicial, the incarceration cost, uh, you know, our law enforcement, all of those things that have a trickle-down effect to the counties. And I'm talking about other programs the state does through community health, uh, different programs that are run by the state pushed down to the counties, and, uh, we have to fund it, and it's a trickle-back of money that goes back to the state of South Dakota by having the counties implement some of these programs statewide. So, as we look at our budget process, I'm just gonna be straight that the first thing I would look at that we're gonna cut in our budget would be the mandated stuff and unmandated that comes down from the state of South Dakota, and we zero in on those agreements and contracts and say, we're in agreement, you think the county should cut? Okay, we're gonna start with the state programs first. That's my position.
So, Mr., Madam Chair.
Chair.
So, Jerry, when you say mandated, of course, we know that we have to have a jail. We have to have a courthouse. We don't have to have emergency services like an ambulance. We don't have to have a library, but there is certain items that are mandated, and some of those probably isn't, they're not even specific to Pennington County, but I appreciate the hours that you put in on this, because, uh, I know that you have to have a lot of hours invested in your own time doing the research that you're doing, so I, I appreciate that.
Thank you. So, um, I was one of them, went to peer with Alan Anderson and Gabe Donie on Bill one-nine-one. Thank you, Shannon, for all your work you did. Told him a couple of days ahead of time, got it done. Thank you, Shannon. Um, he kept me updated, because I had to leave before dark. I didn't know what it was gonna take, which was dumb. Um, as long as it did, uh, they carried session till about seven, seven-thirty that night. Um, I didn't think one-nine-one was a good bill. I thought how it affected the firemen on the levees, um, how it affect the counties, um, how they were doing it, and how they were going to push or shift that burden on other entities in Pennington County from owner-occupied to, um, non-owner-occupied, which you already know, rents are already high for a lot of people. Um, when taxes go up, rents go up. So, only forty percent of, uh, Pennington County, or forty thousand owner-occupied are in Pennington County. So, that puts the burden on the ag, it puts burden on commercial and also non-owner-occupied. So, let's take ag and commercial out of it, or let's just take ag out of it. Again, what are you gonna do when you shift the burden? So, there's gotta be something different. Um, I'm with Jerry. Uh, Commissioner Dur, um, you wanna cut budgets, state, cut your own first. Um, it's not just counties, cities, um, and schools that have a budget problem. It also is the state. So, first, uh, show by example where you're cutting the budgets, you're making a difference, and then give us another funding source in order to make up for revenue, um, for your mandated programs and the things that you do. So, I'm with you on that, Jerry, and now we're going to Bill two sixteen. Um, I asked, uh, Chairman if he would bring Shannon here to do a full explanation on our next meeting for the public and for us of how that's gonna affect us, so, um, so we can have an update as well from Shannon. Um, let's see, at the Fire Service Board, um, went to Doty for their volunteer fire department meeting. Um, so, we talked about budget. We have the past five years and the moving forward five years. The biggest issue is going to be those reserves. So, we did not let them increase their reserves. In fact, we used their reserves last year for them. They need to get a Cascade truck. That Cascade truck just starts at a chassis at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, Jerome's vehicle, and he has to, he don't have to. I asked him to take me when we go somewhere where it's gonna get dark, as you know, can't drive at night. Um, he needs a different vehicle. His emergency vehicle is as important as, just like a sheriff's office or any other emergency vehicle for that, uh, fire serviceman to get where he needs to go to make sure everything is coordinated. So, uh, that's a hundred thousand dollars. So, some of that stuff that we decided not to put in there this year, or give them their reserves, um, they use with four hundred and seventy volunteers in twenty departments, and they do get fire district money, as we already know. Fire district money, I know from just one Commissioner being on here before, sixty dollars for four hundred acres. So, um, let's think about that when we're meeting to help out the Fire Service Board and some of their members on some of their, um, reserves and then what their priorities are. Um, they have that, uh, budget detailed, and Val, thank you, from the Fire Service Board is good at, uh, numbers and crunching those numbers, and she crunched them this year. So, she's listening to what this Board is saying, but we do still need some help. We went through the budget thoroughly again, and we had lots of questions, and then we also went through bylaws. Um, so there wasn't too many thing, changes on the bylaws for the fire service. Um, we always accept questions, some members more than others. Um, have a lot of questions, which we're okay with, but, um, I just like that Board. I like the discussion, and I like being part of a, a group that puts their time and effort for nothing into, uh, Pennington County. So, got a lot of respect for them.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
You know, going back to two sixteen, I think it's a step in the right direction, but I don't think it's gonna fix the problem, really.
No, sir.
Uh, and I know a lot of people aren't gonna like this, but I think Goodwin probably had the best bill that, uh, didn't, it failed, but, uh, incorporating some kind of a use tax on the three or four million tourists that use the Black Hills, we should capture some of that, and you're gonna do that through a sales tax. Um, it's not perfect, but I think, obviously, counties, uh, they're gonna, uh, we can all, you know, we got a budget, we gotta stay within that budget, but I, I really do think that, uh, some type of, I don't think we're gonna be able to sustain the county for, going forward with just property tax. We're gonna, one of the, uh, Larry's suggestions was you're gonna have to find another source of revenue, uh, either for the schools or for the county, and I think a sales tax is, uh, eventually gonna be what we're gonna be looking at.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, just one follow-up, if I could. So, yeah, so Commissioner Adcock, you brought it up. Look at the growth in the state budget, has far exceeded the growth at the county level exponentially. Uh, the other thing coming out of Building Committee that was talked about was the, looking at the project at the jail as we go through and talk about that expansion project at the jail. Currently, right out in front of the jail kitchen, you know, right across the street over here is that, uh, iron canopy cover, garage cover, uh, that's gotta be removed as part of that project. And so there was a talk, Scola looked at it, uh, when that, when that canopy cover was put together, uh, it could have been bolted together, and, uh, somebody decided that, uh, when you anchored that to the top, they welded it to those steel posts, iron posts, beams. So, anyway, there was a discussion about scrapping that and what to do with it, because about another use for it. So, during the Fair Board Meeting or after about that time, I had a conversation with Ron Jeffries. Well, I mentioned it here last, uh, meeting, and, uh, he and I did go look at that with Davis Purcell. So, anyway, instead of scrapping it or if we don't have a use for it, uh, Ron is going to look and see if there's an opportunity, if it comes to that, to move that structure out to the fairgrounds. So, it's just not gonna be scrapped.
Good.
So. That being said, we also, uh, the Chair, we went to meet with David Purcell, and, um, he's going to do a complete, I wouldn't say audit, it's not an audit, it's a complete, um, he's gonna go to different department heads in different areas on their buildings and their needs, and kind of, um, we'll send you a memo on it before we have more discussion. But when you get the memo, it's something that he wants to look at being new. He doesn't know all the information. Uh, BKV's information has not been followed so far in a lot of stuff, and those areas, he needs to make sure he does a follow-up with the department heads, so he wants to go to the different department heads and see what their follow-up is and where we're moving forward, and then bring- forward, and then bring back that report to the Commission. So he will be sending that out, and then you guys can take a look at that and see what you think of it, ask him questions, and then if you're in agreement, we can go ahead and move that forward. So I think it's really good, his suggestions on there, like I said, being new. I think he's pretty smart about what he's looking at and where he's going. It puts all the scenarios in, what if we sold the building, what if we kept the building, what if we sold some other buildings, what's the jail going to impact, what each department needs, and is that need, and is that really still the need for the future in different departments? So I think it's going to be good. Like I said, he'll send you a memo on that from Commissioner Wifenbach, our Commissioner, Chair Wifenbach and me, meeting with him and taking your suggestions and the things that everybody's been talking about. He says he has too many things, and everybody wants a certain thing, and we said, do your job. It's not what we want, it's what should be the best for Pennington County moving forward. So he'll take all our considerations in that and see what it is, because it won't be one person's, it'll be his suggestion, so.
I just want to make sure there's a coffee pot at Concorde's.
That costs money, Dur. We don't have it in the budget.
Commissioner Adcock.
Commissioner Wifenbach, sorry.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to say thank you, guys. I'm very pleased to see which direction that we're all heading in. We're looking at our priorities, we're looking at serving the constituents that we represent, and we're looking for ways to do our share in saving the budget. So thank you, guys, again. I'm sorry I couldn't be there today, but I will be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wifenbach. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.